Christine. You ready? Meeting, uh, call to order Wednesday, the eighteenth October two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Ramirez, can you be using the presidencies?
Yes, please rise. Put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, in this world where there is justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Chair present.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca.
Present.
Commissioner Morillo.
Present.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Present.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Present.
So, uh, we have Commissioner Harvey Suenas.
You're going next, you're going on to the next item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any item being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or request the moving of an item on the agenda.
No, no questions from staff.
Okay, approval of the minutes, the planning commission meeting. October fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Do we have a motion?
I motion approve the minutes.
Second that.
Your roll call, please.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca.
Yes.
Commissioner Morillo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes. Going on to next item, written communication. We have a.
Ready.
That's it.
Going on to next one, public comments, non-agenda items. The public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda but isn't within the subject matter jurisdiction. Thereof, please limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm looking on Zoom. It doesn't look like anyone has their hands raised.
Okay, closing, public comments. Reports and requests.
Chairman, uh, staff has none.
Okay, uh, non-hearing items. The public hearing calendar equation judicial. Going to item number two, architectural review number twenty-three dash twelve. Request a modified Panda Express drive-through building architectural within the addition of a red LED light strip to this. Roof element design of architectural review number twenty-three twelve. At five zero one twenty, Cesar Chavez Street, the project was originally approved as architectural review number twenty-one twelve. Consistent of developing. Of two point eight three acres of the eight point two five acre property to include a two thousand six hundred square foot Panda Express. Drive-through restaurant and a twenty thousand four hundred and forty-two square foot LD supermarket at the northeast corner of Cesar Chavez and First Street. APN seven seven two dash zero two zero dash zero zero seven and seven eight. Seven seven eight dash zero one zero dash zero one seven, continuing from October fourth, two thousand twenty-two, Apple Panda Express Incorporated.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chair, members of the plan commission. I do have a pre-powerpoint. So, uh, commission, this item was continued from the last plan commission meeting. Based on some requests by the applicant that was interested in, um, looking at some potential options on the field visit to the Panda Express site. So, um, the applicant, uh, did have a Panda Express building approved through architecture review by the plan commission previously. That building is near completion. Um, what we did notice is that, uh, one of the red LED lighting strip features was not provided during architectural review. Uh, but we felt that it was significant enough in addition to the project that the, uh, plan commission should be reviewing it. Uh, just quickly, um, because you've seen this before, the vicinity map shows where the project site is in the Fountainhead Plaza Shopping Center. And that the plan commission did approve the, uh, two, two thousand six hundred square foot, uh, drive-through building in the shopping center along with all the supermarket. Um, the overall architecture included, uh, a new design prototype for Panda Express. And with that, they are proposing red LED lighting strips along the exterior. Um, staff did recommend that that lighting strip be view obscured directly so that, uh, you can directly see the lighting. And that it would be tucked under one of the architectural feature and would have more of a halo effect. Um, and I'll show you what that looks like. These are the architectural renderings that were approved by the plan commission and what the building looks like today. Uh, the front and rear elevation of the building. And then the side elevations, one side is the drive-through, the other side is the main entrance to the, the building. Um, the architectural swoop feature you could see is shown towards the top of the building. Uh, they did provide a rendering of what this would look like with the red LED lighting. You can see it in red. The top of the building, uh, as well as the signage proposed by the applicant. Um, they provided, uh, some other depictions of what this looks like in other places, um, at night and during the day. And, uh, the applicant did install the, the lighting, um, prior to receiving any approval. So, uh, the red arrow points to where that red, uh, lighting strip is. And again, here's the image that shows what that looks like on the front elevation. And just architectural detail, what that looks like, uh, their specifications. Uh, our suggestion, uh, you could kind of see at the edge of the architectural swing feature, it's, it's really at, at the edge of it. Uh, we suggest that it be tucked back and, and moved, so it was more view obscured and it would have that halo effect. Um, the applicant did provide a letter as part of your staff report indicating that, uh, making any kind of modification. Modifications to them would be challenging and would not, would not work, um, it would not be feasible. Uh, they also did provide a test of what the, the LED lighting would look like. So there are three images. Of the building and when they tested it last week on a Thursday evening. Uh, so the top two photos are of the Panda Express when they tested it. And then the bottom left, uh, photo also shows it as well. For comparison, they, um, the applicant provided, uh, an image of what the in and out in his neighborhood could looks like with the, the red LED lighting. Which is directly viewable, um, and I think he provided that example to show that, uh. It was a little bit brighter, uh, they have the ability to set it on different settings, a, a lower setting, and this is what they said. Their, the light is on the lowest setting, um, in terms of brightness. So, um, there was already environmental review on the project site and a mitigated negative declaration. Uh, approved as part of the project, uh, so no further environmental review is required. Uh, as far as alternatives, these were the ones that were presented to plan commission, uh, last time. Staff is recommending that the plan commission adopt a resolution that would, uh, approve the LE strip painting. But as long as it was directly view obscured, the applicant is looking for approval, um, as they're proposing it, which would be alternative number two. So, uh, here's our recommendation, which is to have it view obscured either tucked under that, that feature. Or what was mentioned by the plan commission, I think, last time was that there would be like a lip feature where it's proposed, that would view obscure it. Um, so, uh, the, I'm not sure if the, I was trying to see if the applicant was in the audience here today, uh, but they may be participating via Zoom. But that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I do have a question. So it appears that on the letter of the applicant on October eleventh, it indicates that. They condemn the light to the lowest possible level. However, they cannot do anything to the curved roof. Due to the manufacturer stating that it would, it would be, it would cause a challenge. So are, is this still the same case? I mean, this is a letter dated on October eleventh. So are the staff recommendations? Updated or based on this information or did we, because of our last meeting, we asked if the applicant could go back and talk to the manufacturer? And we asked for those three scenarios. Did we evaluate that?
Yeah, so this is their response to that and saying that they believe it's not feasible and be challenging to do that. And so just because it's challenging doesn't mean that it can't be done, right? So that's why our, our recommendation is still the same. Um, but you know, the, uh, if, if the applicant's available to, they might want to speak to that, that comment.
Thank you.
I have a question. Um, so the, the, the pictures here look pretty dim. Putting that lip over will make them just like a shadow of the red or how will that work?
Yeah, if, if you did have a lip, let's say it's on, on the top of, of the lighting, then probably the halo effect is going to be. Just like, it's not going to be around the lighting. It's actually going to be below.
Oh, like a, kind of swarm underneath.
Yeah, uh, but that would be the same case if you tucked it under the, the architectural feature. You would just see the glow feature underneath that.
Okay.
That element.
Did they, did they install the, the dimmer on it, Gabriel?
Um, they, they said it has, uh, a few different settings for brightness and they said they.
So they did install it because when we talked to them last.
They weren't sure.
They weren't, weren't sure about it and they were going to give us that information. Uh, they were talking about also putting the hate, uh. What was it, the eyebrow over it too? So we have that direct.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, we talked about two ways to do that, right? Under the, the element tucked back by the wall. Or just some kind of lift over where it's proposed. So their preference is not just to, you know, uh, the original proposal and leave as is and.
I read their, their report.
Yeah.
Director, um, is there, is there hindrance for them to be able to open? I mean, the, these lights can be shut, be shut down no matter what, right? They don't have to be on in order for the restaurant to function.
Yeah, it's not required.
Not required.
Um, yeah.
So it, so they can't come back and say without this, you know, we can't open the restaurant officially, right?
No, no, one of, one of the things that they're articulating in the letter is that, I guess this is the first prototype. Of this Panda Express in California.
Yeah.
Um, and then so they wanted to be able to showcase that. And they believe that, um, lighting element is a key feature of that prototype, so.
Right. So again, I think with any prototype, there's challenges, you know, to get it functioning the way that the city would like to be functioned, so.
So, yeah, I'm sorry. So how do we regulate on which is the right setting on the, on the light with the dimmer?
Um. You, you, I, that would be a good question for the applicant because what they provided to us was images that they indicated were the lowest, uh, uh, level of brightness. And so that's what you're seeing in those photos I showed you.
So we get some kind of approval or condition for a setting because, you know, once we, uh, we approve it, they're going to turn on the lights full blast, you know, I mean, and we're going to go back to, to the original scenario, you know?
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah. I mean, uh, you know, it would probably be, if you were to prove it as, as proposed, then. Then you should probably condition the level of brightness.
I would recommend that to, um.
Just keeping it thing.
Yeah, keep it to, uh, you know, them. The pictures they showed us.
My main concern is strictly, um, setting precedent here to a standard operating procedure, right? Uh, coming in last minute and would just go ahead and constructing and installing lighting. And putting the commission in this, in this predicament here. Um, so, um, it really doesn't leave, you know, it, it doesn't. Sit well with me, right? That, that we have a developer and are a, a business who, you know, puts their. Um, plan through plan check, starts to go into construction, checks all the boxes, then ultimately in last minute decides, hey, we want to do this. And then doesn't even show face, not even one time in the meeting. Not even one, this, this, this item's come before this die is three different times, four different times, I matter of fact, and we put, but he pushed it out just so he can be here and he hasn't even shown up one time. And so for me, that's, that's, um, he's not, he's, he's, he's not, um. Being a good business partner for a community, right? And if he wanted, he's wanting to showcase his, his development to be in the prototype in California. Maybe he should look elsewhere. Um, if he's done it somewhere else, maybe he should fly his, fly, fly his different, um. Business partners or city members out to go look at projects outside the city or another state, right? Because for me, he hasn't acted in good faith. So that's a, that's a, and, and for me, I, I don't, I just don't want to sit precedent and allow the different agency, different businesses to come into this agency and say, this is how we're going to rule. This is how we're going to do business.
Yeah, and I'm not a hundred percent sure if, if, they may not be in the building, but I'm not sure if they're on Zoom, so, uh, we should, we should check. Uh, the first meeting was, was my fault. I did, I apologize for that. I expressed that last time for providing the wrong date, uh, that meeting. Uh, but yeah, the second time they were. Um, available in person.
Russell, too. You, you, you provided direction, right? What you wanted, what you wanted to see from them, and he still went ahead and did whatever he wanted to do. So that's where, you know, that's, that's what I don't agree. He, he wasn't showing, working with the city, right? So especially you, you're the director, you know, he needs to give you, give you the respect, work with you, right? And he wants to circumvent that or bypass you, come to the tires. Bring it to the commission, right? Really, I, I just, it doesn't sit well with me.
Yeah, you got to work in good faith. I think, uh, would have been appropriate if they would have ordered it after the approval. Because they ordered it already to the way they basically wanted it and they said, well, we can't change anymore. And that's not working in good faith, you know, so I agree, uh, concur with Commissioner Hernandez.
Yeah, I concur with my colleagues, big other commissioners. Is the applicant on the line? It would be great if he could at least, um, you know, speak to us for a moment. Thank you, Director.
It looks like there's a hand raised and I don't know if Chair want to consider opening the, the public hearing.
It's, uh, six twenty, we'll open the public hearing.
Good, uh, evening, commission. Can you guys hear me?
Good evening, yes.
Hi, this is Ruben. I'm with the applicant. I'm with, uh, the architect's office and Panda Express representative.
Go ahead, Mr. Okay, hello.
Yes, sorry about that. Um, yes, so, um, just wanted to kind of clarify a few things. I know there was a couple of questions here. Um, yeah, unfortunately, we're not very local, so we're not able to attend today, uh, but I was there. Couple of weeks ago, I did meet with, uh, Mr. Gabriel Perez in person to discuss our options. Uh, and, and you know what to do after my media onsite meeting with, with the contractor. And the project manager, some operators, and also the installer of this roof element. Um, so I did speak with Gabriel. We, we, we spoke in person. Uh, to talk about this, um, you know, unfortunately, there's some things that, um, you know, we, we aren't unable to, to modify. Uh, especially this red LED strip, um, as I had mentioned before, it is kind of a pre-manufactured element. And yes, it is unfortunate that this was kind of brought up, uh, after the fact. You know, we did get approval, building permit approval actually on the entire system, including this every red LED light. And comments came back after we were issued a permit to bring it into a planning commission. Uh, this came from planning, uh, department. So this was something that we had already gotten approval. Installed it, came back, said, no, it, it's not approved. So. You know, I, I don't think that's fair for, for someone to say, say that, you know, we installed it without good faith. Because we did have a permit for this, uh, installation. Uh, second of all, um, you know, I did provide some photos to staff regarding the LED light being. At the lowest dimmable level, uh, there is a dimmer. I just speak with the manufacturer. He did say that. There is a demo, dimmer installed, so that's why we set up this test, uh, to set it at the, at the highest level and also at the lowest level, I believe. Uh, staff only provided the image with the lowest level. Um, but I did provide a high level for comparison as well. I mean, the high level was pretty comparable to that, uh, in and out. LED light that was, that was shown. Um, so we did provide it. Uh, the dimmer is actually on the roof. It is not accessible, um, after, after setting it. So any type of tampering with it would, you know, would not happen if, if the resolution is to leave it at the lowest dimmable level. Then that is the level that it will stay at and no one can really go up on the roof and open up the cavity and it's, it's a very complex access. To it. So it, once it's set during construction, then it is, that is the, the set light level.
Thank you. So now that we know all the facts, um, Mr. Director, uh, is there, is the city engineer on the line? And so, but, so I got another comment, but in a.
I don't think so.
For, uh, for that development per se, there's an existing communication line that transgress Cesar Chavez. Do we, do we know when, when is that going to be underground?
I don't know when, but it's supposed to be underground.
So do we have a need? Well, that, there's some way, um. We can have that line underground like as soon as possible. That's literally only aerial cable left to underground. In that, in that specific area, right? That would pretty much complete the project or on, or burying all utilities. So I would, I would want to see, um, if, if indeed we're going to move in that direction to approve, um. The lighting system now that all the facts are in order, that we complete the undergrounding of the existing utilities within the vicinity.
Okay, and I'm not, I, I know there's a schedule for that to be underground. I just don't know what the timing is and. Uh, so it may be an issue where the applicant is on the schedule of doing that with ID.
It's, uh, would be for the frontier, all, all the overhead, all the electrical is buried.
Okay.
But the only thing left would be just communication lines.
So at the corner of First and.
First and.
Travis, right? Yeah, um, yeah, I know that's set to be underground. I just don't know what the schedule is.
I think they work concurrently, right? I think that if, if, if indeed we move in the direction to grant, you know, move forward with lighting, I think then we should. Should also complete the portion of the project.
And, uh, I guess that's a question for Ruben. I think. Um, do, do, does your team, are, is your team aware? um, do you do? Does your team or is your team aware of what um is the schedule for the undergrounding there? Um, is that something that Fountainhead Development is responsible for? Or are you working with them on that effort?
Yeah, I believe that's a part of Fountainhead's uh responsibility. Um, we were only provided utility stubs into our into our property, but we didn't do any of the the greater work around the around the area, so that would come from Fountainhead.
So I wish I had more information on the schedule to see, because it could be soon, it could be months away.
So that would be the that would be the only thing left there, right? Essentially, that that development is the only thing in construction currently, and it doesn't seem like they're moving on 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 that communication line, right? All these is done.
All this done.
Working, that's the only thing left that I believe has a permit.
Um, it has a permit, yeah. Circle K is in plan check right now.
Yeah.
What's it? What's the time schedule for Circle K? Construction time? Is it six months a year?
Um, I'm not sure what their construction schedule is, but um, you know, I think they would be close to getting a permit the next month.
There is. We could um
Continue the item?
Well, I mean, continue the item or make sure when they get these get started on the next phase, you know, that things are addressed, you know, that um low voltage is is underground.
Yeah. Um, and then what, you know, some good information might be to have here is uh, maybe Ruben can provide the information. What what is your opening date?
October twenty thirty.
At the at the end of October.
Yeah, end of October.
So, okay. Um, so you know, a few things. I know they do want to open up soon. You know, I know that's not a requirement for them to open, but uh uh, I know in the letter they indicated end of October.
So that wasn't part of your condition of approval? I'd say it's end of October.
So just to confirm what Ruben shared with the the renderings that they were approved, that included this red lining. That that that's what he shared, right?
You know what? I I can't I can't recall if that was part of the
Confused because we're obviously talking about other things, but I want to come back to the lights.
Right.
My my thing is, what was what the statement that Ruben made, is that factual within what was approved to build the building?
Um, I don't know a hundred percent right now without checking back at the the building permits on it. Uh, but what was presented to architecture uh through architectural review, the planning commission did not include the red light lighting.
That's through what the documents you have.
Correct.
All right, but Ruben might have something else.
So the architectural review would provide like the elevations that you saw, and it would, you know, that should detail things like LEDs, LED strip lighting, and then through plan check, um, that's separate approval with all the detailed construction drawings. And that was that's that's the document that, yeah, I can confirm with you if that was already signed off and approved.
Steph is um recommendation approval, so we need to stipulate it. The light situation, make sure that if it's satisfactory with the rest of the commissioners, that's the way they're gonna keep it. We're not gonna go up there and and change it, so uh, I wouldn't entertain the idea of approving it with a condition that it stays and they don't go and, you know, flip the switch or move it.
The applicant proposal, but at the lowest brightness that you're proposing?
Whatever they showed it. What does that look like?
Well, I mean, they showed us a red ring.
Well, is it is that, you know, on high? What levels are?
Commissioners, let's pause for a moment. According to the applicant who just spoke, he indicated that they gave staff one with the highest level and one with the lowest level, and that the in and out is equivalent to the highest level that of one of the photos. So my question, Director, did they provide? Did Ruben or by the provide uh one with the highest level?
Um, yes, through email after I had the staff report written. Um, so one thing the planning commission could ask to see if Ruben wants to share the screen of what that uh illumination looks like.
It seems to me that's the one on the upper left hand side of the top.
It's not. No, it's not there.
Not those. It's not in those those images. Um, so uh Chairman, I don't know, we maybe I can direct that comment to uh Mr. Rodella and see if he has a
Okay.
photo he wants to share that would provide more information to the planning commission.
Yeah, perfect.
I guess I do. I'm uh I'm just looking for those photos really quickly. Give me one sec. Okay, are the images available? Um, is there a way to do a share screen on?
There is, yes. So it should be available through your Zoom interface.
Oh, there we go.
Okay. Uh, it look our IT department indicated they probably need to promote you to allow you to do that, so they're gonna do that right now.
If we're able to see it. So this was the uh, this is the dimmer setting, the low setting here that I provided. And then it have brighter setting which is here. So that is the brighter setting.
Is there a mid?
Uh, yeah, yeah, there is. I think there were, they mentioned there was like four different levels. So we provided the lowest one and the brightest one.
Any recommendations on where the setting should be or or commissioners?
I've seen that. I don't, you know, I believe that you can't alter it any longer. You know, I think the best thing to do is is to decide um is to approve with uh with some sort of masking, right?
Wait, repeat that one more time.
What's it? What would be called less than that shield that we brought over? Oh, the eyebrow, yeah.
Yeah, so that, you know, uh, may maybe that that can speak to that. Uh, I know one option was tucked it under the the architectural element, but uh having the eyebrow over the lighting, um, you know, was that also considered infeasible?
It was it. It actually states that on the report from the architect. It's too much of a challenge and I'll send the eyebrow.
Okay. Thank you for uh sharing with us the highest level dim of the lighting for the facade. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Yep, uh, one one last thing. Um,
Go ahead.
I mean, uh, yeah, like I said, it's it's going to be a little bit unfeasible to um to actually make any modifications to that metal. Um, can it be portioned just because of the curvature? We did talk to the manufacturer. Uh, it is doable, but there are going to be a lot of rivets exposed, um, creating, you know, holes within the structure, possible leakage that might occur later throughout throughout time. So they they highly do not recommend any modification. Um, if it isn't approved, um, you know, we we probably just have to leave it in in no longer uh wire it together to the electrical so that it never turns on. That would just be the one of our options at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rodella. Closing the public comment at um six thirty five. I uh personally, I think it's uh I'm good with uh just setting it at the at the lowest. Um, it's up to the rest of commissioners who can vote on it.
I agree with the with the Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez. Um, I also agree with going with the with the lowest stemming element or level for the facade for that swoop. Um, my only thing is that I understand that there must have been some miscommunication in the process, along the process, but I just want to also reiterate what Commissioner Hernandez stated earlier. It's that we want to make sure those applicants and business partners that come to the commission that, you know, we all are respectful of the process and there's formalities and that, you know, we create a transparent communi- you know, open communication about what is the intent? And if there's changes along the way that we consider them, that's my only thing. So it could have avoided all this back and forth, but uh I will like to concur with Commissioner Gonzalez to go on the lowest level for the lighting and so that we can move forward and, you know, bring something new to our community. And um that's what I'd like to present to the commissioners.
I'd like to see uh see the the communication element of the barrier of the line attached to to this approval. I just want to see the that whole development being built out, right? So um, I don't know if if we really need if if we need that time schedule provided by the city engineer, when that communication line is coming down, what that looks like. Um, and to see possibly attached to this this condition of approval here for this project.
What was a reasonable time? Commissioner Hernandez.
Well, the
And we could stipulate that is
The overhead conductor that the has been down for the past, I want to say since the beginning of the year, right?
Gabriel, I want to make sure that uh, so is this the responsibility of of the developer or is this a responsibility of um and the Panda Panda Express developer? Which is I think that if it's not on their property, they're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to condition this requirement on them. Um, so I just want to make sure that that by putting this condition, something that's under their power and their control.
Is it Fountainhead, the developers? Is that the primary developer? These these guys are sub leasers or?
Yeah, so these the they purchased the the parcel from
So it would it would go directly to Fountainhead, which is the primary developer.
Yes, because you can't condition something on a property owner if that's on somebody else's property. So um I just want to make sure that you guys are clear on that.
So it's not it's not leased per se is what they're saying. It's just an outright sale of land.
Well, that that condition would go directly to Fountainhead. It wouldn't go to
Unless it's leased, yeah.
So we could do that, just stipulate a timeframe that's reasonable. And then uh hopefully uh we be in touch with Fountainhead and and tell them what the condition is to before we move on to
Uh, the the city attorney just Yeah, so no, you can't. So you can't condition them to go talk to another property owner to do something that's on their property. So if it's something that that it's the Fountainhead developer responsibility, um, Gabriel would have to reach out to them directly to underground those utilities because we can't condition that on one property owner to do to to do or take any actions on the property of someone else.
They have the last phase of the project, uh, which is Circle K in their plan check, so I think we could condition them before they 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 get started on on the Circle K that's on plan check now.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that that you guys are clear that you can't condition this on. If it's something that's on Circle K's property, then it's something that you can condition on them.
Okay.
Uh, but it's not something that you can condition on Panda Express uh to go on to somebody else's property and underground these utilities. So I just want to see if Gabriel knows whose property those utilities are on and who was the one that got that condition of approval.
Yeah, it was uh Fountainhead Development's condition of
So that's the the primary developer.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Um.
Let's just reach out to him in good faith and then uh and I think put something that's reasonable and I think, you know, it's reasonable. And they should be able to accomplish that before they they, you know, once you get out of plan check and and get ready to start on that on this last project on the development.
We we can do that.
Is that is that fair? Okay, you want to make it.
Do we want to bring up the motions or
Yeah, yeah.
The recommendations from staff?
Yeah, recommendations and and then let's go, let's get a vote on it.
And um, so can you go to the alternatives? So uh, alternative one was the staff recommendation um that it'd be view obscured two was not doing that. Um, but it sounded like at least one of the commissioners mentioned they were okay with that, but that with the condition that it be on the lowest setting. Um, so those are the two options I heard being considered today.
Yes. So we have a motion.
Is there is there? Before we go, is there a way to control that that it stays at the lowest? More like what if there's no way of of um, because he said there was four different I mean, there's like a number, the knob, I mean.
We said that once they said it.
They said it, they're gonna, they're
They literally have to go up there and
And and and mess with it, right?
Yeah, reset it again. So hopefully, once he said it, then
You can give the director the key, you know.
Oh, my.
Okay, so somebody want to make the motion?
Sure. Uh, well, our commissioners, are we in agreement with the lowest level?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just think it's more on it.
I'm just making sure, just making sure. A doc resolution number PC twenty twenty three dash twenty four approving architectural review number twenty three dash twelve with the findings and conditions as recommended to put the LEDs at the lowest, the LED stripe lighting at the lowest level. Did I capture that?
Yeah, that's fine.
At the lowest level.
Yeah, perfect. You want to add the condition or do we do a separate motion on that one?
Um, well, what she added, we would just have that as a condition.
No, but I'm talking about the bearing the the utility line.
Eyebrow metal?
We can't, we can't do that. We can't, we can't piggyback the
We can, we can on the on the next phase of the
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, let's get a vote on this. Go ahead. Let's uh roll call, please.
Commissioner.
I'm sorry, there was a motion. It's under within a second, so.
Who's second? I second that. I'll second that.
I'm sorry, go ahead, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner, would you on second?
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca?
Yes.
Commissioner Murillo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
No.
And Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, going over going on to item three on the agenda. Sevilla two project changes zone number twenty two dash zero five tentative tract map number map number thirty eight five five seven conditional use permit number three seventy one architectural review number twenty three dash thirteen environmental assessment number twenty two dash zero six, a proposal to subdivide thirty nine acres into two hundred and four single family lots with a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet with a three singles three single family residential production model homes with three elevation options located at the west of Van Buren, south of Avenue fifty two and north of Avenue fifty one, AP number seven seven nine dash two eighty dash zero zero two, seven seven nine dash three two dash zero zero one applicant, the Pulte group.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Ron Goldman. I am a consulting planner for the city. Some background, I worked for the county for a number of years in county planning and working for the city as a consultant for about the last twelve years. Worked on a number of projects, La Entraida, a number of cannabis projects, Vista de Agua specific plan. I'm currently working on the KPC specific plan north of I ten, and we'll have that before you sometime next year. So a little bit of background on myself, I've been working on the Sevilla two project for about a year with the applicant, the Pulte group, and with Gabriel as well. It's great to be here tonight to present this to you. As the chairman said, this is the Sevilla two project. It's on thirty nine acres. It's south of Avenue fifty, north of Avenue fifty one, west of Van Buren Street. It's a thirty nine acre site. It has one residence and five warehouse buildings on it. Historically, the site has been used for agricultural purposes, but for the past couple of years, it's been vacant. You can see on the exhibit, the residents and the buildings are uh within the center of the project site. It's surrounded on the uh east side across Van Buren by another Pulte project, Valencia. Uh, Sevilla one is on the north side of Avenue fifty on the east side of Van Buren Street. And there are single family home developments on the west side of the project site as well. There are a number of project applications that go with this project, a change of zone that's proposing a change A change of zone that's proposing a change from general neighborhood to general neighborhood with the plan you to development standards. The tentative track map three, five, eight, eight, seven that proposes the two hundred and four single family lots, minimum lot size of five thousand square feet. There is a one acre neighborhood park proposed along with a one point three seven acre retention basin. The project density is seven point seven dwelling units per acre. That's the net density on the project site. There's a conditional use permit number three seventy-two. And what that does is propose to utilize the provisions of the PUD standard section seventeen point thirty-eight of the municipal code. And that is to, um, again, use those standards. We have included design guidelines in with your sample code as well. There is an architectural review for the proposed architecture landscaping for the project. And finally, there's an environmental assessment that was done for the project to analyze the impacts that would occur because of the project. Couple onsite photographs that were taken showing the uh nature of the site. Again, it was used for a number of years for agricultural purposes, but it has been vacant for, I think, the past three or four years. You can see on the photograph on the right, um, some warehouse buildings that are existing on site. As I said, the general plan is the general plan neighborhood, general neighborhood. Um, proposes seven point seven dwelling units per acre. It's within the category. Uh, the general neighborhood of seven to twenty-five D U per acre. The zoning existing is general neighborhood and proposed is adding the PUD overlay onto the site. This is an example of the track map three, eight, five, seven, seven. It shows the proposed layout, the two hundred and four single family lots, minimum lots is of five thousand square feet. Uh, most lots are fifty by one hundred feet, fifty feet wide, one hundred feet length. There's a one acre neighborhood park within the site and a one point three seven acre retention basin kind of on the southeastally portion of the site. This is the site plan showing the three elevations and floor plans that are proposed. The um plan is evenly split between a plan one, a plan two and a plan three. Uh, plan one is shown in tan, again, sixty-eight homes are proposed within plan one elevation floor plan. Plan two shown in green, another sixty-eight plan, super homes are proposed. And then in blue are sixty-eight plan three homes. I'll get into more detail on those homes and what the sizes are in just a minute. Again, they're proposing three architectural models, a transitional Spanish desert contemporary and a prairie. Plan one includes nineteen hundred and fifty-nine square feet and floor area. Floor area is a one-story, three-bedroom, two-bath home. Plan two is a two-story, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath home with twenty-four hundred and four square feet of floor area. And plan three is a two-story home, a three-bedroom, I'm sorry, a five-bedroom, three-bath residence with twenty-eight, twenty-four square feet of floor area. All elevations include stucco, uh, concrete tile roofs, garage door windows are optional, sports stucco accents, recessed lighting, coach lighting and. Uh, panel front door and garage door. The um design review on this project found that the project is consistent with the residential design standards that the city recently adopted. This is a little bit more of an example on the plan, plan one elevations, showing the three different elevations that are proposed. Um, each are there have the sixty-eight homes, there are thirty that have a minimum. Um, rear yard setback of fifteen feet rather than the required twenty feet in the G N zone. And that's where the PUD standards allow for a reduction in the rear yard from twenty feet to fifteen feet. Plan two, again, it's a two-story, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath home with the two hundred, two thousand, four hundred and four square feet of floor area. Again, on the screen, you can see those three different elevations. And plan three, two-story, five-bedroom, three-bath home with twenty-eight, twenty-four square feet of floor area. And again, you can see those three elevations on the screen. Uh, these are the project entryways that proposed off Van Buren. There are two proposed northern entry and a southern entry. One thing I wanted to point out is that the fire department recently, last December, adopted a technical policy to change the. Uh, whis of the entryways. And so what you see on the right-hand side is a cross-section of project entryways. Fire department went from a fourteen-foot uh street to one street being fourteen feet and the other being twenty-four feet. If you have an unguarded center median. That was this kind of a surprise we encountered about a month ago. The applicant revised the um street section for those entryways. What that might do is change the lots adjacent to the entryway instead of a ten-foot setback. They may have to go to a five-foot setback. That would affect three lots, two on the northern entry and one on the southern entry. Uh, you can also see on the left-hand side, cross-section, an example of the um entryways to be a six-foot median landscaped. And pavers are proposed at the entrance from Van Buren Street into the project site. Uh, Van Buren Street spent a lot of time on Van Buren Street to to make sure that it was going to be an enhanced design. We increased the right-of-way of Van Buren from ninety-four feet to ninety-nine feet. You can see on the cross-section on the right, we've got a large area adjacent to the block wall for a multi-purpose trail. We've got a equestrian split rail fence that will separate that equestrian trail from the sidewalk. And then you've got a landscaped parkway and then the street. Also proposed on Van Buren Street are two medians that will be constructed along with Van Buren Street. There will be a project entry sign at each of the entryways. And on the right-hand side is a wall and fence plan. The uh treatment on Van Buren Street will be a split split face block wall with pile asters every fifty feet. Uh, within the project itself, they're using block walls for all side yard, rear yard fencing. Retention basin will be fenced with a wrought iron fence. Uh, each front yard gets landscaped with one specimen tree along with a number of shrubs and ground cover. And plant pallet proposed is on the right-hand side, typical of your desert landscaping. As I mentioned, there's a neighborhood park that's about an acre and they're proposing that be maintained by an L L M D. Will include a turf basketball court, lawn area, cornhole picnic tables and a desert garden area. And we conditioned that the park would be constructed prior to the issuance of the hundred and first occupancy permit. So about halfway into the project, the park has to be completed. There's also a one point three seven acre retention basin at the southeast portion of the site. You can see an example of what's proposed there. It will be primarily native species, again, very passive in nature, what's proposed on that retention basin area. We had an environmental assessment prepared, EA twenty-two oh six. Uh, in terms of the impacts, determined that most were not significant. Those are listed on the left. There were five that were um less than significant with mitigation. The consultant prepared a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. We sent the um environmental assessment out for public review, a thirty-day public review between September fifth and October fifth. We got six comment letters back. Agua Caliente provided two letters, Imperial Irrigation District one. The Department of Fish and Wildlife, one letter, Regional Water Quality Board, Control Board, one letter. And the Morongo Band Mission Indians, one letter as well. We prepared responses to the comments received, along with we revised mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And that was included in your planning commission packet. Without recommending that the planning commission adopt resolution PC two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-six. Recommending the city council approval of tentative track map number three, eight, five, five, seven. Changes zone number twenty-two dash oh five, CUP number three, seven, two. And architect architectural review number twenty-three thirteen. And also that you adopt a mitigated negative declaration for EA twenty-two oh six with the findings and conditions recommended by staff. And we conclude my report and I'm available for any questions.
Can you open for public comment, please? Thank you.
Yes, uh.
And then also just have a few comments also.
You want to give your comments first or? Is that okay? Yeah.
Just want to thank Ron for that presentation, just just a few comments as working with Ron on this. Uh, you do see something different with this project than we've done in the past. Uh, Ron highlighted the larger perimeter setback. That uh we typically haven't had in in older projects in the city typically. The perimeter uh sound wall would probably be about ten feet from from the curb. So this was a much wider perimeter. Uh, it kind of has that equestrian feel. Um, that city council requested us consider for this project. Um, it does include a public park. Um, originally, uh, Pulte came in with. In architectural design that was a repeat of of previous projects. And, you know, uh, you know, I know the applicant representative and I had a discussion where like, hey, we want to see something new in the city. And so we do thank them for really considering um like a new product, right? Yeah, we believe Coachella deserves, um, you know, uh, you know, diversity in the architecture that's proposed in the city. Uh, so you are seeing a a new project, new design. The other is, um, there is a a parkway proposed for all single-family residential uh units, landscape parkways. So essentially what that would mean in the future is there'd be more of a streamline, uh, tr- tree-lined streets within the neighborhood. And that's something that we have had in the past.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, it's a beautiful development. I got a question for Mr. Goldman. Um, is there is there a way, um, I do realize and recognize there there's a five-foot P U E that's there. Um, and the last thing that I would I would hate there is is for there for any utility company to place a vault there and take half the backyard of. Of the corner lots there and the entryway. And say if they would have put a vault in that vicinity, it would require a notch in their block wall. Is there a provision that we can add that um maybe stipulate in the language um that. Uh, that the utility company cannot place a vault there? Essentially, what happens to those homeowners, they you see it all the time that they're they literally you lose like a quarter of their of their backyard to utility vault.
If we could condition that.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I'm in commissioner, if you have anything else to add to that, because I think. It would require the the applicant to quickly work closely with ID, right, of these locations, even even today, right, to figure that out.
Well, I just typically like the max pull ball, like the max pulling length of a vault is eight hundred feet. And so if you just specify in a language, they could just, you know, plan it, plan accordingly, right? Not to place their facilities in or around, you know, that corner lot. Right? And that's one of the things that you you see all the time where utilities just place, placing in their infrastructure wherever they just seem fit, right? They just go about placing structures wherever they want to. And here we can provide them some guidance for specifically for an entryway that were, you know, it looks pretty nice, beautiful entryway. Right? The last thing you want to do is you see you drive into the development, you see nothing but notch block walls to accommodate for for structures that came after the fact.
I know the plans did not show any of the vaults impacting that, but I think we could add a condition that uh the vault don't be placed on any of the border lines.
Please, yeah.
Looking at the comment from letter D is a agua caliente. Uh, do they have jurisdiction on on the land? I thought I thought it was Torres Martinez or Al武stein they would have jurisdiction.
The the.
On the architectural find, you know.
So.
Findings.
We have to go through AB fifty-two process.
Okay.
We notify all the tribes who have asked to be notified. So we sent them in request for comment and they responded saying they would like to have a Native American monitor present during grading.
Yes.
So we changed that to um provide that there will be one during grading.
Yeah, because we have to local, we have twenty-nine, we have Al武stein.
Right.
And we have Torres Martinez. I know Torres Martinez has a branch that does specifically that.
Yeah, they didn't respond. Morongo responded that they didn't have any comments.
Yeah.
But I will call the anti did respond and said they prefer they would require a monitor during grading and we've added that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Yeah, okay.
I have a question.
Go go ahead, Commissioner Ramirez.
Can you help me understand? So for the Sevilla two community, the entry we will be on Van Buren?
Yes, there'll be two entries off Van Buren, correct.
Where exactly? Because you have the Prado community and then you have Sevilla one and then you have Aventine right across.
They're going to be not adjacent, not across from each other. They're going to be men block.
Men block because that little strip right there, it gets really congested as you take children down to Coral Mountain Academy.
Yes.
In the morning, it gets really bad. So how are you going to? How is Pulte going to?
We we had the city engineer was concerned about that.
Yeah.
Everything. They did a traffic study that analyzed the traffic patterns in the area. Within Van Buren, they will be constructing two medians. Um, the plan show those two medians. Um, but the city engineer did have comments about how that was going to work if someone was making lealtors. At the same time, yes.
Is there, oh, go ahead.
So that whole frontage of the project is going to be, uh, you're installing curb and gutter and.
Oh, yeah.
Sidewalk in the home.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Along Van Buren, there'll be curb and gutter. And as I said, and Gabriel reinforced that, yeah, the the streets keep along Van Buren is going to be enhanced.
Because the the plan is to actually widen that whole Van Buren Street.
So if, okay, so if let's say I'm coming out of Van Buren, going to Coral Mountain, will there be a traffic light? Is that what you're insinuating or?
They were not conditioned to put a traffic light in at this project location.
Uh huh.
Yeah, they will be again paying uh their fair share towards other improvements in the in the area.
So there is no consideration to put traffic light whether beyond Van Buren or fifty-one because that area is getting congested. And that area, I've seen significant car accidents already. So I was just curious of um some more question maybe to staff. Has that been considered to add traffic lights?
So there's.
There's only one on fifty-one and Van Buren, right in front of Aventine and that new Sevilla of one community, it's a mess. And I I I'm just saying, and so I was just wondering if there's any considerations for a traffic light around there. Or something, uh, city engineer is not on the line. Okay, so it's just a question.
But but there is no street light proposed at the entrance to this project.
Yeah.
Or.
Or the other.
Junction with the Valencia project.
Understood. Okay, that's a concern for me. I'll be very honest. Um, I live within that area.
Right.
And so that's why I'm speaking candidly for the my members in the community and for the city of Coachella.
We had the traffic engineer and their consultant look at that very issue to make sure that the numbers were not going to require a trigger a light for this project. And they came back and said that thing is required.
Okay, interesting. Okay. Uh, I do have a follow-up question, though. Uh, can we talk about, can you guide me in your presentation where we're talking about design standards for the homes? So.
The elevations.
Perhaps I I apologize, I should have marked the. Page, but I just want to make sure, Ron, that, you know, somewhere in these documents that. When the house is complete, before we turn it over to the new resident of the home, that it's built completely, that everything's done and set in stone. Is there somewhere we can talk about that, Commissioner Hernandez? Can you help me guide me?
Are you referring to like some like building materials or what?
Yeah, maybe uh the completion of the home where I understand.
So obviously, like, uh, so this was on ease, obviously, the building inspector. Um, there's an inspector, he he inspects the project, correct? Like every step of the way, they, you know, there's a bunch of checks and balances that take place, right? You you want to elaborate more on the building inspection process perhaps?
Yeah, I think that's where maybe I'm I'm going. That would be great. So I just want to make sure that once the the home is built and set in stone and they close and they're under, let's say, the person who's buying the home is under contract. And then they get the keys to the home. I understand that builders um provide some type of warranties that if something's off that they can fix it. But I want to make sure that whoever lives in the city Coachella that, you know, our builders or developers are fair to those who are getting new homes. That they are versed in understand um how to remedy those matters and that they're not being, you know, they're not going through hoops of fire. So if you can help me make sure, understand that, like, if, you know, this is supposed to be installed, that that it's installed. And, you know, we don't leave our constituents out, you know, wondering what is next for our new home.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, so we will not issue a final on the home until it's a hundred percent complete. Um, and that includes everything from the solar system and uh energy storage systems that are required. Uh, through any finished material that that is required uh as part of the approved set of plans. Uh, there's also other checks and balances that are there. So we'll have other uh other departments within the city providing uh final inspections on on these projects before. We give any kind of uh final occupancy approval for for the homes.
So for example, each home, so the two hundred and what is it, two hundred and how many? Four, thank you, the two hundred and four homes that will be built, someone from the city Coachella will inspect each home and have a checklist.
Correct, yes, yes. We'll go through every stage of of that home through construction, every phase of construction. And uh approve every phase before uh anything is covered uh throughout throughout the construction of the home. So do anything from underground foundation.
Okay.
Framing inspections and and uh do the combination of everything that is uh behind the walls, mechanical plumbing and electrical.
So they have a form called a certificate of occupancy.
Understood.
So if once they give you the CO, you're able to move in. If you don't have a CO on any project, whether it be residential, commercial, you can't move into the home. It's a it's a final inspection from the building department.
So there's only certain safety features that, you know, there's a. Features that would allow someone. Features that would allow someone to get this certificate of occupancy, right? So let's just say for minor things, you know. Then there wouldn't, you you would just kind of leave it to the builder to address that a warranty, I'm assuming, right? The smaller stuff.
No, we would have, we would make them uh complete the hundred percent.
So what was the scenario? So let's just say someone in Coachella buys a new home and let's just say the frame is broken and the. Let's just say, you know, the person who bought the home noticed, oh, it's broken. And they go to the builder and they put submit a service request to fix that frame on the front door to fix and then they say. Oh, no, that's how it's supposed to be. I mean, someone should have caught that broken frame before they. Gave the keys to the person who bought the home, right?
Correct. So that's that's where we have uh uh different departments also also be doing those inspections. Um so we we will look at it for uh building code compliance um and life and safety. Um and energy uh and then we'll have a planning department that does a lot of the aesthetics to to the home.
Understood.
We will, we would also inspect it to the elevations that are approved. And then have uh other agencies as well do their inspections and finals before we issue a certificate of occupancy.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that information.
You're very welcome.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So going back to safety, right? And I don't know if this is a city question or a developer question, right? A- as we know, um and I I want to get political, but um. The 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 weather is changing and we had a lot of interesting weather. And it's going to rain no matter what, right? So when when developing these new homes, uh is the city or the developer responsible for proper drainage? Uh within these communities. Um I I live in. Uh one of my my home is one of the ones that got uh very close to flooded, the house down the street got flooded. Um I'm the one that had the pool where the guy was on the jet ski. Literally, um and so we we do know that obviously that this type of weather that is affecting us. Um when it was when we were building houses fifteen years ago, when we're not taking any consideration that. Uh for now, new products and new development. Um who's responsible for that? Who's responsible so that when someone buys a now a six hundred thousand dollar home? Um that we get these crazy weathers that the home doesn't get flooded, right? And that and that we we're thinking about that also. Um so I don't know who is supposed to answer that question, but I'm very interested in the answer.
So the developer proposed the track map. And along with that, they did all their engineering studies that showed what was required in terms of making sure drainage that was on the property was handled properly. Was controlled properly, didn't increase anything offsite. And that's why you could have one point three seven acre retention basin. So that's designed to hold all the water that's coming off that project. And it doesn't increase the velocity coming off the project. So the developer and their engineers did that. And the city reviewed those plans and they were conditioned for what was going to happen within this development. Um it's up to developer to grade it, but then the city's going to be out there inspecting it to make sure it's done according to plan.
So do we know that percolation ratio there, how uh the speed of that water is percolating out of that rotation basin?
We do. Um that David or Jay did take care of that question technically.
Hmm. Well, that's uh these are, this is a, we have to understand, this is a hundred year flood zone.
Yeah, my, um I I. We we can no longer understand that this is not going to happen again, right? I I don't think a- as a community, that was the biggest frustration. And um a- as a community member that obviously we can't control this, right? So because there's certain weather that we can't control, what are we doing as a city to prepare? For, you know, a hundred year flood that happens every three years, right?
Yeah.
And so it's changing.
I don't know when your home was constructed, but the regulations in two thousand and twenty three are significantly better than they were in prior prior years. Um I can tell you that the original proposal that came through had a number of basins. That, in my opinion, were problematic because they become um a problem for who's going to maintain them. Um so they. Omitted those. We have one larger basin to handle the water coming through this project.
So so just to clarify now, maybe this is a city question. So as a city. We are not, we are not in the business of building proper drainage. We're we're more in the business of building these basins to hold water, just to just to come, just to understand how how we're developing the city. So we're more, we're at the moment interested in in doing the basins rather than proper drainage underground to drain the water.
So are you talking about like sewer systems?
Yeah.
Currently, we don't have like.
The the. Right, infrastructure, yes.
And yeah, the the way the city designs captures by basins.
Okay.
And everything slopes right east, west.
And I'm one of those homes that is east, right? So so that's why. You know, in the future, when I'm buying a home, I'm not buying a home to the east, you know, I'm buying a home from the other side, right? And again, that's because of experience, right? But a new person that comes in by the house has no idea about that.
Right, or or you just buy it, she like, turn the solar to drive down into the door. Right?
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, can we can we address the percolation and the type of soil that's there in that area and uh?
Excellent question, yeah.
Hi, good evening, Commissioner. Uh my name is Jake Isabella. I'm the engineering consultant for Pulte for Pulte Homes. Um we still don't have like a standard uh condition yet until we go into final engineering that has to come from. Um I just send the city engineer. So at the moment, like what Ron said, we capture all the onsite water onto the basin, nothing offsite. And then to your question too, I mean, the site is pretty flat. I mean, I think the city. It's minimum street grade, it's like point three percent, so. That's where we get that, you know, drain issues, but. I mean, we try to capture, you know, a hundred year storm. That's our basically our max standard that we typically use, so. I mean, this past storm, we were probably seeing like a thousand year storm, so I mean, that's rare, so. We try to kind of, you know, add to that, but I mean, our typical condition is a hundred year storm and. So, I mean, we're trying our best to kind of. Uh add to that, condition that to the site and see, you know, that's why we have that one point three seven acre basin. Six feet deep, so. And then we're proposing dry wells as typical for the city of Coachella.
Where's the dry wells exactly going?
It's going to be on the basin.
In the catch basin?
Uh on the actual retention basin, yeah.
How many?
Two. What was that?
Is that maximum?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a typical.
Is it a hundred feet or eighty feet?
Eddie, I can't tell you. Yeah.
Normally eighty or hundred.
Right.
So what are we doing for offsite mitigation along Van Buren? I imagine that that watershed's north to south.
That was a condition, or I mean, we're capturing everything that's onsite, nothing offsite.
And is that a city engineer? Is that or is that? A condition for like standard development?
That's standard development and what the city requires. So we won't capture anything offsite, but they are responsible for capturing everything onsite.
Right, so so what what are we doing along Van Buren, right? So that, so if we if 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 we talk about specifically. Uh Tera del So, if we use that for a case study, uh water runs there. Uh west to east, right? And you always see sandbags going, you coming up or, you know. Their city sets sandbags there along forty eight. You know, as it approaches Calhoun, that entryway there, right? And so all that water coming from Indio. Once it passes Jackson, just goes downhill, travels and it comes into that community then, right? And so we imagine. If we had, you know, obviously, there's no curb and gutter uh north of this development at that. The commercial, the commercial zone there. But there is, there's going to be some water ru- running down, you know, south towards Van Buren, right?
Yeah, the Riverside County Flood Control and usually they address the 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 high risk areas. Along the mountains and.
Yeah.
Because uh we we've never, we don't have a sophisticated uh drainage system, so all the new developments now. That are being developed, they have to keep the water. On site, you can introduce it into the street. So. Like the retention basins and.
Right, but for everything that, everything that's flowing off of uh Van Buren headed towards fifty one, right? So as you pass fifty, the waters, you know, water is coming down. It's either gonna, it's either go into the development or continue, so.
It's supposed to go this way, it's supposed to go east, because that's the lowest point of the valley.
Where the development in that, it's going to slope south.
Yeah.
Towards towards fifty one.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, the water's flowing south towards fifty one.
Yeah.
So in the in the buildout scenario for recent developments, like all developments should be capturing their own retention. The problems happen when we're capturing water from older developments or from Indio. And so so that would require a separate solution than what we would require Pulte to accommodate. And so the city would have to look at a solution, right? So sometimes cities will purchase property to create. You know, retention to deal with those problems. A lot of times that doesn't get based on the developer.
Right, it's a be, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful development. Want to congratulate Pulte for, you know, stepping outside the norm here and and doing, then just buildings. Like proposing this type of type of uh development. Thank you so much for working with our director and from hearing uh. The the wishes of of the community, you know, and I don't know if the applicant wants to speak. Um but there's there's another element that that I I want to address and and getting down to the C C R's and potentially um. Looking at how we we can uh better utilize some of those C C R's for uh ultimately achieving what the city wants. Um yeah, versus just having there. So when we can introduce that, we have any literature regards to C C R's cable?
Um we we don't have the C C N Rs for this project, um but uh you know, I know some concerns were raised by by commissioners earlier about uh. The impacts of the. Uh buyers that would uh utilize a home specifically for short term rentals, right, or over concentration. Uh we had really that concern with with the applicant. Uh the applicant uh did indicate that they prepare. Um C C N Rs covenants uh restrictions on on their on their projects that includes Sevilla and Belissima. And so in those C C N Rs, um the city currently right now aren't aren't a party to those C C N Rs. So basically, those C C N Rs are enforceable between property owners, right? So there are um. Some sections of those C C N Rs that are related to how people. Uh maintain their landscaping, that you can't convert your garage if it's not an A D U. Um and there's, you know, another section that. That they have as a template for other projects that does not permit. Um rentals for short term uh purposes, right? And so. It it really hasn't been enforceable by the city because we haven't been a a signer. To to that, right? If you look at the C C N Rs for the previous projects, uh Pulte signed off on it. Um if the planning commission wanted us to consider. The city to uh to enforce uh any of those sections of the C C N Rs. Then uh we would need to be like third party beneficiary to them, right? That's the only way to be able to do that. Um so uh but right now, the way that. Pulte, you know, does draft their C C N Rs, it's really for a complete ban of of short term rentals, right? Uh at least from the past that I heard from planning commission and comments. Um I know commissioners haven't been interested in in a ban, it was more like the ability to. Uh prevent over concentration, right? So just wanted to provide that feedback because I, you know, I I I did get some feedback from the planning commission ahead of time with that concern with this development. Um and then when I relay that concern to the applicant, they did provide an example of the C C N Rs that they would look for for this project. And that wording is actually um that no one can have short term rentals.
Now, is that is that is the process to become a third party? Um signee or designated, is it pretty stringent? Is it pretty, what's what's that process look like?
Um it's not stringent. All it would require us is to be the signatory on the. C C N Rs, my understanding, and and uh maybe city attorney can can weigh in on this. Um and then there's an enforcement section I've seen on their C C N Rs that just say between property owner, right? So instead of just being between property owner, who had an identifiable role for the city to be able to uh enforce the C C N Rs as well.
Yeah, and state law does allow it. State law just requires it to be explicit in the C C N Rs. So if it's not explicit in the C C N Rs, then it would just be um the owner of a separate interest or by the association. And since this isn't an H O A, um if the city is not a third party beneficiary to them or explicitly explicitly. So um on the C C N R as somebody that can enforce the C C N Rs, then it would just be um the owners who could be able to bring a lawsuit or civil. Um action against the other owners. And so that even goes to speaks to having your lawn properly maintained and or your. Your house being painted black.
Well, I think that like when it comes to their lawn or anything like that, um it it would be a. A public nuisance and and the city can also also use their municipal code. But right now, because it's not i- in the municipal code or it's not within the C C N Rs, the city wouldn't have. Um wouldn't have a right to 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 any action unless it's explicit in the C C R's. So Commissioner, if I can add to that, uh you do have a condition of approval that's already in uh your listed condition of approval number forty four. We engineering always require C C N Rs for projects and so uh those. Those, you know, the way it's worded is that it addresses maintenance obligations. Um including right away private landscaping, private streets, sidewalks, utility, streetlights. And their water quality management plan features.
Mm hmm.
Um and uh so it gets submitted to the city, gets approved, but the city's never been like a signatory to them. Uh so if the planning commission wants to do that, then it's probably as simple as saying. That the city would be a third party beneficiary to the C C N Rs.
And now is this a case by case, uh case by case as developments come online, or is this something that we can work towards? Can we work towards this being our S O P? As far as becoming third party. Across the board for every new development.
Yeah, so this condition can be case by case, right? And so if you want to address case by case conditions. So i- in this case, where I've seen with Pulte's C C N Rs, it's usually about landscape maintenance, don't cover your garage. Um uh no short term rentals, so that's kind of commonly what you see uh in their C C N Rs. Uh but it could actually capture other things that that may be of interest to the planning commission.
This um. Does it mention your C C R about painting your home?
Thank you for the presentation.
So before before the applicant speaks, can you go ahead and open up the public carry?
It's a seven twenty twenty two, we're going to open up the public area.
Commissioners, my name is David Dwyerly with Pulte Homes. Um so yeah, just to touch, you know, based on uh the director Perez. Uh you know, another solution we kind of discussed is if, I don't know the policies of short term rentals, but. There's another way where the residents have to register to have short term rentals, so you can keep track of whoever's. Doing that, and if they're, you know, obviously doing it without being registered, then you can send out code enforcement to regulate that. So. Along with the C C N Rs. I mean, we're we're also open to, you know, adding the city as a third party to the C C N Rs as well.
Yeah, I would like to see that that added part of the condition for approval, right? The city become a. Third party on that C C N R to better, you know, serve its community, its constituents.
Commissioner, we we could do that. The only thing I just want to inform you, if you did do that. Basically, what that means is there there would be a outright ban with short term rentals in in this community. And so it's really up to the planning commission if you want to ban short term rentals here. Uh limit them, like I'm not sure exactly what the intent would be. Uh but the way that that the template working is from the Pulte or C C N Rs is that you can't do it at all.
Right.
Unless, as you indicated, David, right, that if they go and solicit a business license, because Airbnb requires you to have a business license. To convert your home into a short term rental. Is that what you said?
That's correct. And that way the city can control the percentage of homes within a a development, not restrict the whole development. Let's say you wanted to, you know, do thirty percent for each community or something like that, and you can dictate that.
My 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 issue with that is what what we we need to add the add language where. Where individuals buy that home strictly for that, so so, you know. They they can rent the home, they can do through Airbnb, but they can rent the house all year long, right? So. So that that's my issue. If if there's language that. Maybe myself as a as a homeowner, right, I want to rent my house for the festivals, you know, fourteen, fifteen days. I I I think that's, you know, as a homeowner, that's all right, right? I think the issue that I have with this is like literally my next, the house next to my house is a hundred percent Airbnb, right? Um that's my issue, that someone would buy one of your beautiful houses just for that. Right? And so is is there, is there, I guess, language appropriate that? As a homeowner, you can make a decision to do that, you know, for, I don't know, thirty days. Or fifteen days in the year, right? Um is is there that possibility uh to add that language, not for someone, you know, that. You know, sold their house in San Francisco for, you know, five million dollars, buys five houses here. And all the five houses, they're they're doing them a hundred percent Airbnb, right? So.
Right.
Those are two separate scenarios.
Right, well, I think you could still restrict it, like, let's say you want to rent it out for, you know, just a week at Coachella or something. And you'd still go down. And you'd still go down to the city and get a temporary, you know, maybe Airbnb permit or something, you know, whatever that language is. You know, that way you're, you know, you're not doing it year round, or the neighbor's not doing it year round. And if you have an issue, you can bring it up to the city and say they're doing it year round, and it's really disturbing to my lifestyle, you know? So that way, you know, the city can have control again, just to say, okay, this is just creating too much of a nuisance. We're gonna, you know, uh not permit your house to have whatever.
Yeah, so so I guess my question is, when someone is buying a home, again, I'm very ignorant in this, I'm just asking maybe a stupid question, you know? So when someone's buying this home, is that something that is told to that buyer prior to them buying the home? That these are the guidelines of buying a home in Sevilla too? Is is that is is that within a contract that they actually sign and are bonded by?
That's correct.
And again, I'm just, I'm 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 asking, I'm not aware of it.
David, isn't it when uh once the buyer is under contract and they sign the paperwork, then and they're in those documents. Once the buyer's approved, that's when they introduce the CCRs, not before, not until they are under contract. And they say, yes, you're gonna buy it, David.
Right, well, there's there's the CCNRs for the community, but there's also a community specific disclosure that the buyer signs. Um when they purchase the home.
Yeah, that that's what. Once they're under contract, once they say you're approved, that's when then they get introduced that the disclosure. And the CRs, CCRs, because they have to sign off on them. So not until after.
You know, Director Perez, I think that this uh this one issue here is gonna, you know, we should just do a study session. Cause it's gonna need a lot more attention. Um uh you know, there's concerns across the board. And I think that, you know, we're gonna ne- need some time to to really have dialogue and discussion on.
I don't think we're in a position to to wait, you know what I mean? We're we're not in a position to like, okay, let's defer this and and. Down the road here, you know what I mean? That's like.
Okay, so if you want to put some conditions.
So I like I like to see a uh like, one, I like to see the city become a third party. You know, that we we have have the ability to go in and to enforce code, right? Uh secondly, I would like to see, like, so since so since we, they they already say it's banned, right? It's not it's not permitted on the development. Well, if we uh allow the city to do it, then it opens up to uh the potentially them being being able to. Access a a permit, right? So if if that's the case, if one, if if we trigger one, one, something else is going to be triggered. So I'd like to see uh something like uh no, no short term rentals are allowed in the development. Until after the whole completion of the project plus two years, right? So if if they're phasing out the project, it's being built over two years and someone buys in phase one, well, they have to wait, right? Until they complete the project plus two years until they can, you know, go ahead and apply for a short term rental. What happens is like if I go and buy and like, you know, and that's gonna be my forever home, and I want some tranquility, I want some tranquil, I want some peace. You know, that I want I want to be of the rest, right? Instead of my neighbor, you know, who just an investor, just opens it up and he's, you know, partying every day, right? And so, you know, for me, uh you know, it's gonna be my worst nightmare coming back, right? So I'd rather see it, you know, where if we have the the city um become a third party. We make, we do make them eligible, you know, for a short term rental, but after the completion of the project and. Plus two years.
Well, I think what it does to is create stability in in any neighborhood.
Yeah.
Uh so these are people that are making a commitment to our city, making long term investments and want to raise your kids here, want the kids to go to school. So yeah, I think that's a problem, so.
Uh I have a question. How long is the um the development? Like, how long will it take for the project to be completed or the development of the community? Like, if we estimate it, just just curious.
Yeah, it's tough because of the market, you know, depends on the.
That's why I was like the market and also depends on like who can, again, the market, buying homes. I I don't want to be left in our community without anyone being able to buy a home or leave empty homes.
Right, I think I think what it does too, right? Like, I believe, like, once this stuff is is, you know, we disclose, hey, this is what's happening in this development.
Yeah.
Then we really get a sense of who wants to be a community member versus the community that like just invest for the sake of investing in a house. Whether he wants to flip or whether he just want to profit off off of uh, you know, a short term rental, right? So I, it's like we used, you just separate, you're gonna separate, you know, uh.
Can we get a legal opinion on on that council on on what the legalities are about making these type of recommendations or stipulations?
Yeah, you could you can put whatever condition you want on the CCNRs, as long as the developer accepts it. By the city, it's fine.
Okay, perfect. So do we have a motion?
So commissioner, just to level set a little bit, so the city of Coachella allows short term rentals, first and foremost. On the CCRs that Pulte has indicate that they don't allow. So if a person wanted to, there's that option. Commissioner Hernandez is proposing something additional to the CCRs. For for the city of Coachella to be part of the CCRs. So there's two things happening. One where it's like, okay, let's add the city Coachella with Pulte for the CCRs. There's another one where at the city Coachella and at the stipulation about that after the development is complete. Then they can go for these permits to Airbnb their home per se. So there's a couple conversations happening. I just want to level set and be, you know.
So it's fixed, what I'm introducing is allowing the city to govern, right? Is is essentially, that's that's what. Yeah, to to be a third uh.
Partner, yes.
Third party partner and uh es- essentially allows them to to govern that, uh uh govern this list of rules.
Yeah, yeah.
So whatever the CCR may be to enact it. So right now, you know, community members are doing whatever they're doing. So for instance, if you go to Sevilla one, right? Well, I don't know what's what's going down, what's going on there, right? But uh there's a good majority of homes are. Commercialized, I'd say, right?
Yeah.
And so um the city pretty much really doesn't have uh.
A say.
A what saying how it's how it's being ran, per se, right? I'm trying to, we need to find a mechanism uh to allow for some governance, right?
I'm in agreement, but the second part you mentioned, you indicated that you're proposing maybe adding the stipulation along with. Could the city Coachella be in a third party in this, in the CCRs? You're adding an additional condition. I just want to be clear about.
Yeah, I'm trying to uh so the, obviously, the city does allow for short term rentals, right? Across the board.
Correct.
But what I'm trying to say here in this community is, uh there's a lot of people who are buying for the sake of being it for their forever home, right?
Correct.
And I'm not sure how they feel about their neighbors. You know, someone buys and their neighbors, you know, just purely investment or they rented it out. And or just wanted one Airbnb, right? And so what I'm trying to introduce as well is like perhaps uh the Airbnb clock on this development starts. Once you 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 build out all your phases, right? Plus two years, right? So you get to, so if it's if it's a two year development, you know, you got eight phases in two years, well, if you buy in phase one. You're gonna be Airbnb in four years.
Well, let's let's get a motion.
Just just as a suggestion, I'm gonna read a little bit of the language here for the CCNRs. But it says, no owner shall be permitted to rent or lease such owner's lot for transient or hotel purposes. Or for a period of less than thirty days. And I'm thinking after in that CCNR. Statement is put unless permitted. And that would be, and then the city could have a a study, a special study session to further decide. Dictated, if you want two years or if you want, you know, I mean that.
I'd like I'd like to see the plus the two years, right, after the completion of the development, so.
Go ahead, council, you had a question?
I was just gonna tell you that we're still in public hearing, so just make sure that you ask.
Yeah, we'll close as soon as he's done. Okay.
Yeah, unless you have any other questions.
Yeah, are you, are you done?
Yes.
I have a question. When's the estimate um estimate groundbreaking time? Like, when will we guys start building?
So we're shooting for a start grade of first quarter of twenty twenty four, so around uh mid-January.
And and completion?
Completion, um two thousand twenty eight. You know, there's always a market.
So you'll see your first Airbnb in twenty thirty.
Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Please raise your hand.
Eric, can you can you see if there's more public comment?
Is there any more public comments, Gary?
Anyone's on Zoom, please raise your hand.
Don't see any.
No, no hand trays.
Oh.
Uh I have a couple of concerns. One is um that this development, while I support it. Will increase foot traffic in the area, and it's already been brought up that it is a very dangerous intersection. My concern is that there are going to be kids walking to school um to Coral Mountain Academy. And in front of the development, there's a brand new sidewalk that dead ends in dirt. Um and there's no curb and gutter there um because that area is not um built out yet. And it appears to be a significant safety concern. Uh is there anything that the city has in plan to? Improve the infrastructure ahead of development in order to enhance the safety of kids walking to school?
Um question, Mr. Goldman, how far is that um that development, this development located from the from the intersection of fifty one and Van Buren?
Quarter mile?
Right.
So, well, we can add, you know, a little over one thousand feet.
Yeah.
So is there, game, Mr. Director, is there like any type of funds? That we can apply for, maybe through an asphalt sidewalk or something, or perhaps continue, continue. Um the question fence?
And this is uh south from the development to Avenue fifty one?
Yeah, getting a source, and and this, does the, isn't there a, I believe there may be a sidewalk headed headed north from the school?
No.
It's on the other side of the community, it's not on that side at all.
Which that 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 sidewalk should exist already no matter what, just because of the sureness that there's a school there.
Yeah, but not on the, I'm not on the Van Buren and fifty one block, I can tell you one hundred percent.
So is there a lot of foot traffic from Valencia? You know, kids walking to school on.
On the side coming down.
Which Prado and Valencia too in the corner.
Uh there's a lot of foot traffic uh crossing from Coral Mountain.
To the other.
Yeah, to the other side and.
But there's there's sidewalk there on 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 the.
Right, but if they're, if kids live in this proposed neighborhood, they're gonna have to, in order to use a sidewalk, cross. Well, there's no good way to do it, because they'd have to walk through some. Rubble, some dirt, cross the street, cross the street, cross the street back.
Yeah, yeah.
So just trying to uh think ahead here, right? I'd like to see the city, if at all possible, um enhance the safety for the kids, right?
So is there, is can, is there, is there a way uh to work with a school district? I know there's the sometimes have crossing guards, right? Um is there, is there a way to, you know, to get? Like, not necessarily pavement or or asphalt, right? But if we can delineate a a walking path, you know, yeah, uh that moves from the school north. Towards, you know, beyond fifty one or a thousand feet, right? Until we get to would be the question trail at this development.
Maybe we could uh visit with the school district and see if we could share some costs or do something that's safe, there's a safe for them.
Yeah.
The students to be walking.
Yeah, Chair Chairman and Commissioners, um yeah, I think I think that's that's a valid concern. We didn't get any comments from the school district about that concern specifically, but we can definitely follow up with them. The the final decision isn't made here today, it still has to go to the city council, so one option is for. Um to recommend staff to follow up with the the school district to see how that could best work. Uh the other, this would be also a question for for city attorney is. Um right now, the way that the conditions are worded for Van Buren Street, it says that the applicant would construct. Curb gutter sidewalk and to connect to adjacent improvements, in this case, there are no footmarks. So, you know, I don't know if that's in the purview of the planning commission, considering the findings that they have to make. If it was something that uh might be an unsafe condition for, you know, schoolchildren that live in the development. That's something that uh the planning commission could consider as an improvement beyond the site boundaries.
I I I would say no, especially because it's going outside of their property again. Uh we don't know who the property owner is. Um I don't know if it's a private property owner, if it's city owned or it's the school district. That owns it, so it would be going back to uh what we spoke about earlier about um having the developer. Come onto somebody else's property and and conditioning that to them. Uh what I would recommend is that that the commission recommends that staff look into it and see who the property owner is. And if there's any um plans in the future of of putting a sidewalk or or crosswalk or anything on that property.
Yeah, because it's not only a thousand feet uh from Pulte to the corner fifty one. It's also from fifty one south all the way to the school state, so that it's undeveloped. So it's not, it's probably three, four thousand, three, four hundred, a thousand feet.
Yeah, um so so what I recommend is 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 requesting staff to to follow up with the school district. Uh you know, I I could see that would probably be something that the developer would be concerned with too. So we can have a conversation with them and see if there's some solutions that we could arrive at before we get to the city council. Uh that's an option.
Now, does the city have any type of like reimbursement mechanisms? Like, for instance, say, for if, not to say that we're gonna condition Pulte to do it, but if perhaps, you know, we were to condition Pulte to do it. Is there someone we could write in the language that there would be a reimbursement mechanism? That whatever they spent to make these offsite improvements be reimbursed once, you know, contingent upon. That neighboring developer, right, enabling property do going into business, is that, is that something we could possibly do?
I would say, well, it really depends. It depends on what the city's policy is. And it's it really depends on whether the city has the funds to even do that.
But uh but I but I think we can look into that. I guess the more of the question is. Uh what does the right of way dedication look like to the property of the south? Do we have the right of way where that transition can easily be constructed? Or um or do we still need to acquire it to be able to make the sidewalk in a innocent manner, right? So I I would recommend, I think, that the best thing we could do is is follow up with the school district, work with the applicant. And uh look at the street right away, work with the city engineer to see what solution there could be. And and if there's a solution that that could be reached, you know, that's that's something we could recommend either as a condition of approval. Uh before it goes to city council.
I think so. I think the conversation with the school district would would be positive, you know, at least to start and see what they're adding. If they're willing to participate.
Maybe we could do like a two by two or something.
Yeah.
Uh I'm sorry, what's your name?
I'm Bob Melkessian.
Bob, thank you so much. You raised a great, great point, thank you.
Yeah, I do have one uh one minor concern. Um that is an active um agricultural site directly to the south of the proposed development. I operate it. Um we. Just want to, you know, future pace ourselves here and and say, uh, we don't want there to be an issue where we have neighbors now. And now they have a problem with the work we do. The two that come to mind is one, uh tractors are tall and I don't want uh. If there's some way we can uh mitigate people wanting to complain about the tractor driver can see in their backyard. As well as um, I don't know, there's no scientific way to say this, but tractors produce. Uh like a type of low frequency rumble that can shake your house. Um and so. Uh lacking maybe the verbiage to describe this, if there is a way to construct the barrier wall on the edge of the property. Um if it's not too much more expensive or perhaps what they have in mind is adequate already. Um to prevent the. Um the residences on the southernmost edge of the proposed community from having those nuisances. Um from noise and being seen.
So the type of the sound that was the tracker generating?
Uh it's not so much the, like, how loud it is, but it it creates a shaking.
Okay, so is it now, are we, is that cascade into building materials where the woodstove is gonna crack or what are we talking?
Well, I don't think it's gonna crack, but we started five thirty in the morning during the summer. And I don't want people to buy a home there, and the next thing they know, we're out there working and. Um when it comes to agriculture, certain uh practices have to be done in a timely manner. Um, when it comes to agriculture, certain, uh, practices have to be done in a timely manner. And.
Well, I'm sure, I know everybody doesn't have that in mind, right? Like, you know, you go buy a development, you can see a CCNR and be like, oh, I kept by a, you know, can Airbnb, but there's a farm here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and as a developer, we'll, we'll provide a, a disclaimer, you know, that what is adjacent to their property. So, um, I don't think there's a way to build a sound wall, you know, because they're pretty hefty, um, walls. But I think just having a disclaimer to our buyers is the best route to go about that.
You're not using the tractor daily, is it? That's just there maybe a couple of times a month or?
Uh, depending on what we have going on, it's, uh. Thirty days.
It's a pantry farm, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a pantry farm.
Yeah, so. Basically, uh, one day applying, couple days of harvesting or? Okay, I think it's in, well, they're actually providing the, uh, disclaimer zone.
Any interest in building a sidewalk for, for our kids?
Can we have all public comments, uh, on the microphone, please?
Uh, I, I'd like to follow up with you, maybe we can get, uh, your contact and then, because this, this idea of a, of a connection will probably need to work in the future.
Yeah, or may, maybe perhaps because the, um, obviously, the, the, the street, right, is, is. And the sidewalk there are, I imagine going to the ultimate right-of-way with, is that correct? Are you building, right? So, yeah, so. Yeah, so I imagine if we were to, you know, add a walking path, we would have to, you know, wanna build and maybe. Maybe perhaps talk to Bob, Gabe. And looking at the ultimate right-of-way.
Question?
Just a reminder, just to, if you have public comments, put it in the microphone.
Any more public comments? Okay, we're gonna close the public comment at seven forty-seven. Do we have a motion on?
Yeah. All right, can we see the recommendation as provided by Mr. Goldman? Should Goldman be able to take notes?
Yes, I have to open a public comment again too.
Is there somebody, is there somebody else?
No, that's fine.
It's fine, that's, okay.
So, yes, I've got, uh, adding a condition about the vent, not be placed on the corner lots, um, by IID. Um, we're gonna add a condition that the city is a third party to the CCNRs. Um, we're going to work with the school district on off-site sidewalk, also with the affected property owners, um, see if we can make some improvements within that areas.
Something that's safe for your kids.
Yes, uh, and then the, add the language to the CCNR about the, uh, short-term rentals, right?
Yes, I've got that. That basically it's going to say, uh, we're gonna use the Polte proposed CCNRs, um. For a period of less than thirty days unless permitted by the city, two years after the project is completed.
Perfect.
So we're gonna have to repeat that.
Do I have to repeat all that or am I gonna make the motion?
Just say the motion and then say as amended by the commission.
Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion, um. To change.
I, I think there was one more, I just wanna make sure if that was needed to be in there, uh, just requiring a disclosure about the farming facilities this up. Do you want that in there or?
No, it doesn't have to be in there, because I think that's something that Polte does for all of their developments anyway, so it's, it's fine. That comes up the Department of Real Estate when they get the report, the white report.
Okay. Go ahead, Richard Hernandez.
Yeah, I just, uh, first, I just clicked out of my.
Sorry about that.
My PDF.
Is it on the? It's on the top of the screen.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to change episode number twenty-two dash zero five, ten to track map number three, eight, five, five, seven. Condition use permit number three seventy-two, architecture review number twenty-three dash thirteen. Um, environmental assessment number twenty-two dash zero six. A proposal to subdivide thirty-nine acres into two hundred and four single-family lots. With a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet with three single-family residential. Production model homes with three elevation options located west of Van Buren Street. South of Avenue fifty and north of Avenue fifty-one. A P M number is seven, seven, nine dash two, eight, zero dash zero, zero, two and seven, seven, nine dash three, two, zero. Dash zero, zero, one application or applicants, the Polte group, uh, with conditional. Uh, language as stated by the planning commission. Can I have a second?
Do we have a second with the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, get real comments.
Alternative Commissioner Ponceca?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Uriel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job, Mr. Goldman.
Okay, do we have a, going on to the next item on the agenda? Information? Anything, Gabe?
Um, I don't have much, just wanted to give you a few updates, uh, there is, uh, an event this week, which is tacos. Um, chavelas and. So, uh, that's, uh, this, this weekend on Saturday, so hopefully you can join that, uh, that event, that will be at Veterans Park. Uh, so that's usually a pretty good event, uh, to participate in. Uh, the other is, we had a visit by the Strategic Growth Council and that's a statewide, um, agency. Um, that we submitted a grant to for the, um, transformative climate communities grant. So we did submit that along with, I believe, five other jurisdictions for a grant an amount of thirty million dollars. Uh, so they did a site visit, um, and they're still evaluating our application. And so that site visit took place at the library today with, uh, some of the community partners, which would be nonprofit organizations, uh, that operate in the city. Um, and that will include improvements such as like urban green improvements, uh, transportation, uh, solar, uh, energy. Uh, and, uh, so we, we should hear back from Strategic Growth Council sometime by mid-December. But, uh, if we get that grant, that's, that would be a good thing for the city.
Just a little update, I did a little, uh, presentation, uh, for some, uh, visitors from the UK today. Uh, through the Greater Chamber Conference of Palm Springs, gave them a tour of the art scene in Coachella. So they were really impressed with what we're doing here in Coachella and the art scene, but it was a, it's a fun little trip, so everybody was all excited. Turned out pretty cool.
Is there a way we can get the study session that, uh, the chairman mentioned in regards to the Airbnb, um, ordinance?
Yes, we're trying to get that pretty soon, um, you know, uh, I think that's gonna be probably in November with the plant commission. So I know that's a, uh, becoming more of a topic with the plant commission and city council, so I, I know we wanna get it in front of you. It's possible.
And how are we doing with our AD, ADU standard?
The pre-approved plans?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, we have a draft of the plans and so we just need to schedule that for our planning commission to present those, those drafts to.
So it's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
One-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom.
Perfect.
So, um, I think I might have asked it before, but, uh, detached units and also an option for. An ADU conversion of, of a garage.
Perfect. Very good.
Would that flexibility study also consider the parking situation that we've been discussing?
Well, you know, uh, with the law, there's a lot of exemptions for parking with ADUs, um, so there's, there's a lot of limitations for us in the city.
You have to do underground parking. We're gonna have to start building underground parking. Hey, do you have a motion for German, German?
I'd like to motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Welcome.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Alternative Commissioner Ponceca?
Yes.
Commissioner Uriel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Sister, Chair Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you, everybody, presentation.